Sorry about that, folks.
I feel like as soon as you mentioned the light one.
Yeah. Okay, so just a quick announcement before our or after our initial agenda was posted, we did add an item on the consent agenda. That's item number nine. So the consent agenda includes nine items today. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's public communication. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us today on any topic they would choose for up to two minutes an individual?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. The first two I'll call up is Mary Manso and Stacy Wainwright.
Welcome.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Mary Manso. I am here speaking as Mary Manso. I'd like to thank you for the conversation at your work session about the CPO/CCI letter. And I'm hoping, not having seen the changes, that I can thank you for the changes that have come through in the letter. But, you know, not having seen the letter, I don't know. So a question I have is how transparent is it to approve on the consent agenda a letter that has been changed since it was posted with the agenda? And where can the public see a copy of the revised letter? Thank you.
To put you at ease, Mary, the changes were underscoring the items that are now underscored. And the only other change was in the looking ahead section, a reference to one Washington County was moved from the first sentence to the second sentence. So the content has not changed at all.
Well, that's unfortunate, but thank you.
And for the benefit of our public, Ms. Manso has been very active in the CCI and CPO programs for decades. In addition, she has served on the Washington County Planning Commission, hence her providing the clarity today that she was speaking as an individual. Thank you, Mary. You've worn many hats over the years in terms of leadership. Stacy?
Hey, my name is Stacy Wainwright, and I'm here as someone with a concern about a neighboring road that you all will be talking about during your work session today. So thank you very much. And my comments are really to thank you and to thank Commissioner Treese, who has helped our neighbors understand more about safety at the Northwest Thompson Road, where the county is considering making some changes to the roadway. So thank you very much for keeping safety in mind. I know that sometimes there are competing considerations, but I know that for the families in our area, we'll be thinking most about safety at Northwest Thompson Road, where there's a severe S-curve and a fairly significant slope neighboring an intersection, making that intersection's safety very important to us. So thank you again.
Clerk Moss, anyone else today?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have Mr. Dale Feek. Dale? You can go ahead, Ms. Feek.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I see you're reading what I've sent you. Maybe I don't need to say much. Just emphasize, I did attend the Clean Water Service Advisory Committee meeting on June 12th, made public comment. I commented about the representative from the Bureau of Reclamation that spoke at the Forest Grove City Council location a few years ago. He had maps that showed the height of the water. If it was breached, 30 feet of water would come out. And he had a map showing how far the water would go and the depth of the water at different locations. I did find out that the Forest Grove Fire Marshal, or at least the Forest Grove Fire Department and Clean Water Services have those maps. And I encourage the Clean Water Service Advisory Committee to become knowledgeable and become informed of those maps. I am concerned about industrial sites that are being built below the dam. And at that meeting, it was told it won't be until, I think it's 2035, before the dam is actually constructed. So we need to be concerned about people living downstream during the time before it's constructed. That's comment one. Comment two, you know, there's pipe being built from the Lamont River, and a concern that I and other people have have to do with the kind of water that's being going to be shipped here to Hillsborough. It needs to be tested for PFAS chemicals and other contaminants, but also for water temperature. Well, Lamont water is at least one degree higher than it is in TV Highway. So I had a question. How will PFAS chemicals be dealt with? Will industry pay for some of the ways to mitigate the problems? Intel and some other smaller semiconductor facilities are huge water users. Will their rates go up more than the residents' rates? So anyway, that's that. Correction on John Schrogg and the Exploration News Oregon. And it's not really funded. So the idea is he needs more funding. So I made a mistake on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Feek. Is there anyone else in the auditorium that wishes to write a comment for up to two minutes that would like to raise their hand? Start coming forward. Not seeing in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish by public comment for up to two minutes on any count related topic? Give you a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Appreciate it. Okay, next we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of nine different items. Two sets of minutes, one item from the Cooperative Library Services, one item from Housing Services, four items from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, and one item from County Administration Office. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to today's consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. Today, we have a proposal before us to appoint Claudia Yakos as the Western Washington County Representative to COLPAK. This is coming from you, Commissioner Willie. Would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, there's a position open on the COLPAK Board, obviously. And Claudia has been recommended that she fill that position. She is the Executive Director of the Forest Grove and Cornelius Chamber of Commerce, has done a really outstanding job with both of those organizations. And we just look forward to having her expertise there on the COLPAK Board. So I highly recommend this. And we'll make the motion when you're ready.
I think we're all ready.
I would move that we approve this appointment.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to presentations. I would like to welcome up to the table our awesome Elections Team from director on down, as well as County Counsel in support of our great elections. And thank you to our staff team for your flexibility. I realize our work session went over, and so you've essentially needed to hang around waiting for us to start today's meeting. So you're here today to teach us all more about ranked choice voting.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records, and Elections. With me today is Dan Forrester. He's the Elections Division Manager, and Jason Bush, Deputy County Counsel. And as you said, today's topic is Elections topic, ranked choice voting. And to move us to the next piece, introduce Dan Forrester.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. Very pleased to present you with this update on developments in ranked choice voting in Oregon, with particular attention to how changes to the election law may affect and are affecting Washington County. Briefly, our agenda. I will share some information on the referral measure for ranked choice voting statewide that will be on the November 2024 ballot, and then discuss possible implications for Washington County if this statewide ranked choice voting referral measure passes. And then Jason Bush, Deputy County Counsel, will share some information about preparations and plans for administering elections for the city of Portland as they have ranked choice voting on the ballot this November. So to start out with a quick refresher on ranked choice voting and what it is and how it's done. So ranked choice voting, or RCV, is a method of voting in which voters have the opportunity to rank candidates in the order of preference. There is a threshold set for winning a contest that's dictated by the number of winners in that contest. So for example, a vote for one contest has a threshold of 50% plus one vote to win the contest. And then if it's a vote for two, or a vote for three, or some other multi-winner contest, the threshold is, it changes accordingly. Votes are tallied in rounds until there is a winner, until somebody passes that necessary threshold. And so what this means in practice is that when you are counting votes, when you do the first round of counting, if there, if no candidate has enough first choice votes to win outright, in other words, to pass that threshold, then you go to a second round of voting, in which the candidate with the least number of votes is eliminated, and the second choice votes from those ballots are distributed among the remaining candidates. And this process continues until one candidate passes the threshold for winning and is declared the winner. And I'm sort of, I'm describing a vote for one contest, and it's slightly different in a multi-winner contest, but it's basically the same thing. Now, because of this method of counting in rounds and redistributing votes, the ballots all have to be tallied in a central counting facility. In other words, one physical location, like your county elections office. And then another feature of ranked choice voting, or RCV, is that it eliminates the need for runoff elections. So if you have a candidate that meets that threshold, and they get a majority of votes, there's no need in that case for a runoff election. In the 2023 legislative session, there was a bill introduced, House Bill 2004, which would establish ranked choice voting as the voting method to choose winners in statewide contests. The legislature decided to refer this to the voters, and it's going to be on the November 5, 2024 ballot. And if it passes, this law will establish ranked choice voting as the method for selecting winners in the offices of President, Senator, Congressional Representative, Governor, Secretary of State, State Treasurer, and Attorney General. It's worth noting that state senator and state representative would not be among the offices selected by ranked choice voting. This new law, if it passes, would also authorize local governments to choose to use ranked choice voting in candidate contests. So counties and cities, as well as school districts, fire districts, water districts, all of the other special districts could choose to use ranked choice voting to determine winners of candidate contests. So if the statewide ranked choice voting referral measure passes this November, it would become operative on January 1, 2028, in time for the next presidential election cycle. And if it passes, the Secretary of State's office would be tasked with adopting rules to define the number of candidate choices to be ranked, and then also working out the logistical details of how the votes would be tallied, remembering that they have to be tallied in a central counting facility. There would also be additional rules that they would need to consider, not all of which are necessarily spelled out in the proposed legislation. For example, who would pay for any increased costs? Would the state reimburse counties, for example, for additional tabulation system expenses? The Secretary of State's office would also consult with county clerks and elections officials to determine best practices in administering ranked choice voting. And they would also conduct a voter education program to make sure that Oregonians were ready to use this new method of voting. So what would it mean for Washington County if this statewide ranked choice voting measure passes? We don't know all of the details right now, but it does seem fairly certain that the costs of administering elections would increase. We don't have definite numbers on increased costs for our tabulation software, but they are likely to be significant. And there's no guarantee that we would be reimbursed for those cost increases. Because ranked choice voting contests, just as a feature of how they're designed, take up more space on the ballot, we would have longer ballots. And in many cases, we would likely have two-page ballots. So this would increase our ballot printing costs. And because more paper means more weight in the ballot packet, it would also lead to increased mailing costs as well. A longer and more complicated ballot would lead to increased costs in ballot processing, for example, in the ballot packet insertion process as they are prepared for mailing. We could expect to see increases there. We'd also need to dedicate more staff time and resources to coordinating with other counties and crafting intergovernmental agreements on shared districts. So for example, cities or other special districts that cross county lines, we would need to coordinate and craft IGA's for each one of those districts. And this could be a lot of work. And finally, then, there's the cost of maintaining community trust, which is harder to quantify, but it is very important. And we would need to make sure that we here at the county were able to audit this new system of voting and tabulating votes in a way that the community felt secure about, and so that they felt that the results continued to be accurate. And I think that also at Washington County, we would want to make sure that we were spending time and resources on local outreach to voters so that Washington County voters were fully equipped to navigate this new system. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Deputy County Counsel Jason Bush, who will talk about the city of Portland and RCV in the city of Portland.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and members of the Board. I want to take a little bit of time today and talk about ranked choice voting in the city of Portland. While we don't have a ton of voters in the city of Portland, we do have enough such that we need to be prepared and be able to administer an election for the ranked choice.
Because it has not been stated yet, I believe, the city of, the reason why we're needing to spend some time on the city of Portland now is because this November election is the first time the Washington County Elections Office is needing to implement ranked choice voting for the November 2024 ballot, irrespective of the statewide measure that Mr. Forrester walked us through. Thank you.
Yes, that is exactly correct, Chair Harrington. So in November of 2022, there was a referral to the voters who passed ranked choice voting in the city of Portland, which our election staff has to be prepared to administer in this fall, November 2024. So irregardless of what happens on the state measure in the fall, we still have to implement ranked choice voting to some degree, starting this November. Here, you can see the vote, the races that, and the offices that are impacted by ranked choice voting for the city of Portland, and that includes the mayor's office, the auditor's office, as well as the district, the city council positions for the city. The interesting thing is they actually, the mayor and auditor's office have a slightly different formulation because they're not multi-member districts. But for our purposes, the reality is that the model is moving almost exclusively for ranked choice voting model in the city of Portland. And so we just need to be in a position to administer the election as such. All right.
Excuse me. Commissioner Treese's district includes that portion of Washington County that is in the city of Portland. So I know she has a comment or question, as do I, before we move on to the next slide.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to reiterate what you alluded to, Jason, early on, is that we do have households that are in the city of Portland as well as Washington County. And that doesn't have to do with your address. It doesn't have to do with your ZIP code. It has to do with boundaries. And I just want to reiterate that for our viewing public as well.
That is, that's completely correct. We do have voters in the city of Portland here in Washington County that this directly impacts going into the fall.
So my question is, to your last bullet, that each position, I assume that's mayor and auditor, as well as these council districts, will have up to six ranked choices. How was six defined? Any background as to that six? Because we may be asked.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. So I think that the city of Portland wanted as many as possible, as many rankings as possible. But there are tabulation system limitations. And so because Multnomah and Washington County are using one tabulation system in Clackamas, which is the other county that has city of Portland voters, is using a different one, we have to go with the system that has the greatest constraint. So I believe that, my understanding is that the system in Clackamas could accommodate only up to six. That's my understanding, so.
So moving to the ballot and a ranked choice voting model, or the ballot that we're looking at here, the main point I would want to convey off the sample ballot is that really, though there's a lot of candidate names on the sample, it is our understanding that the ballot will look similar to the one presented here in terms of the number of candidate choices. So when Mr. Forrester was mentioning earlier that the ballots themselves would be quite a bit longer, you can see on one race, it is substantially longer than normal going forward. So that will have some implications for elections in the future, just in terms of the processing. And then I think the most important piece here for our purposes, for the city of Portland, is the agreement that we were trying to build between the three counties that will be implementing the system, between Multnomah, Clackamas, and ourselves, to administer the ranked choice voting model for the city of Portland. At the outset, the counties agreed that the idea here would be to try to make an IGA that was replicable across the state if more and more jurisdictions decided to implement ranked choice voting going forward. In terms of the IGA itself, it designates one county, in this case, Multnomah, since they have the bulk of the city of Portland electors, as the primary county. And Clackamas and Washington County are secondary counties under the agreement. In terms of the difference here, for the primary county or whoever has the bulk of the voters for that particular race or election, they are responsible really for the design, tabulation, and the reporting. And for the secondary counties, we are looking at mailing and collecting, and then transferring those ballots over to the primary county. Practically, for this race going forward, what we're going to see is two different ballots. So the city of Portland voters and Washington County are going to get one standard ballot, but they're also going to have a separate ballot for ranked choice voting. Elections will collect those ballots, and then will ultimately transfer them to Multnomah County, who will process them. So if there's challenges or other issues, that those will be addressed by Multnomah County in this particular context. Beyond that, I think that's really sort of the primary bulk of the presentation. I wanted to add as well that we did have a couple other supplemental slides, if people are interested, to go more in depth into how the mechanics of ranked choice voting would work.
Can we go back to the prior slide, please?
Yeah.
So for this specific election, you know what areas are within the city of Portland within Washington County? Are, do you know, is the city of Portland planning on having or requesting any additional inserts in the ballot so that voters have information about how to properly complete their ballot with ranked choice voting? So there's what comes in the ballot envelope, and similar question with regard to what about material in the voter's pamphlet?
I believe that Multnomah County is planning an educational insert piece for the ballot packet. And so as we get closer to the election, we will work closely with them to talk about the details there. But I believe the entity is probably going to be Multnomah County, although the city of Portland is also doing a robust education and outreach effort as well, using other media.
So for the second question, our voter's pamphlet is a different voter's pamphlet than Multnomah County. So how are you navigating, I don't know what Multnomah County is planning to put in their voter's pamphlet for ranked choice voting. Are you part of that collaboration to ensure that for those voters in Washington County that are specifically in the city of Portland, that they'll have information?
Yes, thank you. We will use the voter's pamphlet as another channel for educating voters on ranked choice voting. And we would like to coordinate that messaging with Multnomah County as much as possible.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Just one quick question. I was looking at your sample ballot. Is it gonna, it's just going to have a name there? Is there going to be any reference to what party they are registered with?
City of Portland elected offices are nonpartisan, so it would not have a party next to it.
All right. And so I'm, well, yeah, I guess ours is the same thing. So, yeah, that wouldn't come into play. So thank you.
I have one question. Have you heard any discussion out of Multnomah County, what they're going to do in other elections there? I know this is city of Portland, but as Portland goes, usually Multnomah County goes to an extent in regard to their voting. So have you heard any conversation?
We haven't talked with Multnomah County about other ranked choice voting contests, although of course, Multnomah County has also passed a measure to have ranked choice voting for Commissioner contests. But I believe that's going to be implemented at a later date. I don't know the details on that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
You mentioned that the one, there'll be two ballots for those individuals that are in both the city of Portland and Washington County. And the second part of the ballot, or the second ballot, will go to city of Portland for tabulation, correct? And will that ballot be, how will that be tracked?
The ballot, do you want to take this one, Jason?
Yeah. Yeah. So we, in terms of, this goes to the chain of custody idea. Basically, we'll collect them, and then they'll be segregated, and then we will transfer them from there to Multnomah County elections. And then they'll process them from there.
My question is, will they be tracked by the individual voter? Because you sign the outside of your envelope, right?
Yeah.
So this, this goes to kind of a basic function of how we process ballots. So once we get the ballot back from the voter, we verify the signature is correct, and it goes on to be opened. At that point, there is no longer any connection between the individual voter and the ballot. So that, that connection is broken. It is anonymous at that point. And so these ballots- And so these ballots would be collected after they are taken out of the ballot return envelope, and so they would, and they would be prepared for delivery to Multnomah County at that point.
Thank you. You answered my question. I appreciate it.
I'll jump in next. I have a question, and before that, I want to just say that people in Washington County that have questions about elections, Dan and Joe and Tanya are very famous. Your names I've heard from so many people that really care about the election and your process and how you do and the great work you're doing. So thank you for your leadership. The question I have is, by the way, thank you for educating us about the statewide and the implications for our county, and the education piece included for the state. So I won't get into the statewide because that's to be determined, but I do have a question about, then if you know the number of people that are going to be impacted by the city of Portland race that are in Washington County, if you have a number of residents that are going to be impacted. And then I had a question about, I think the Chair really asked very well, but I'm wondering if the city of Portland prior, and I'm referring to the question about the education question, if the city of Portland has engaged in, in education campaign to really educate people who are impacted ranked choice, rather than just getting a slip in the envelope that day? So I have a question about that. Is there any robust education to educate people about what to expect? And there's two ballots of people are going to get in our, in our county. And I also had a question about the chain of custody, but I'll take it off with Jason because I don't want to go into somewhere else, but I'll take it off comment. But, and then I have another question.
So to answer your first question, there are approximately 1,100 voters who are Washington County voters who also live in the city of Portland. So that is the number of voters that would be affected here in Washington County. The vast majority of city of Portland voters reside in Multnomah County. And then you had a question about the outreach efforts on the part of the city of Portland. Yet they do have a very robust education and outreach program, not limited to sort of passive media like a slip in the ballot packet, but I believe that they are engaging in community meetings and through a number of other avenues as well. I've met a number of times with city of Portland Elections Office staff. Because we have such a small number of folks here in Washington County, we're not as directly involved in those in-person meeting efforts, but I am aware that they are happening. And then, was there a third question?
No, I'll take the off, which is, thank you, that's very comforting to hear. I live in deep Washington County, but I'm glad to hear that there is outreach and education happening. The question I have is, the last question I'll ask, and then the rest will be off. So city of Portland has, I think the last media article said about over 60 people running for these district and mayor races. Now voting the top six, but then there can only be elected three. So help me connect the dots there.
For the city council positions?
Yes.
Not for the singular mayor or auditor?
Right, the mayor is one, one and done. Thank you for that clarification, Chair. Yes, correct.
So just, just to distinguish between the mayor and auditor are vote for one contests, which of course may have many candidates. It's not unusual for city of Portland to have over 20 filed candidates for the mayor position. You can select up to six choices of those, however many there are, 20 or 24. On the example Jason showed, it was 24 names, and then you can select six rankings among those. For the multi-member districts, there are four districts in city of Portland each electing three, so it's a vote for three. Washington County only has district number four, and so we only have one district. And so I'm not sure how many people have filed to run in that district, but there could be 20 or more, yeah, so.
That's fair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the update today. We believe it will serve our voters here in Washington County, who will have the opportunity to utilize ranked choice voting in this upcoming election for city of Portland candidates, as well as a look ahead with regard to a statewide measure that is on the ballot. So thank you very much for your presentation today and addressing our variety of questions. I think they are reflective of questions that we may get in the upcoming election, and I can tell you that this board is very proud of the work of the Washington County Elections Team. So please carry that forward to everyone in the organization that you work with. So, thank you very much. All righty, next on our agenda is our second public comment opportunity. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board for up to five minutes, an individual, on any topic they would like. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. We have Bruce Bartlett. Bruce?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Bruce Bartlett. I am here as the Chair of the Washington County Committee for Community Involvement. The work on the letter that you received is primarily my work. I have invested around eight hours in studying the RNOs, and I would, first of all, I want to thank you for having this conversation and any guidance that you can provide us. In a high-level comment that I started off the letter with was that RNO 80108 and 8658 work in conjunction, and 8658 does not supersede the original one. And so in giving direction to OAICE on the revisioning process, both of those, we suggest, should be considered, not just 8658. The identification of the CCI subcommittees as falling under public meeting laws now requires that those minutes, agendas and minutes be published, and that publishing is done on the county website, I assume, which will require infrastructure added to the website to contain the minutes and then the tracking of the minutes. So we suggest that there will be a budget impact in that the workload of the Community Engagement Department will be increased somewhat as a result of this. So that deals with the cover letter. I don't know if you're changing, so the, the letter I heard in the work session was revised, and I'm curious to see what the revised letter reflects of, of the comments that we made. And so one of the things that struck us as we were discussing the letter initially was that Section 4E of the CPO portion of 8658 seemed to just say that the board will review anything that we submit, which has been historically the case, and we appreciate the sincerity of the board in responding to us. It seems to us that there is an additional constraint put on CPOs when acting as a, as a group, when the CPO submits some kind of testimony or letter as a group. And we understand that it needs to be on an agenda and voted on, in a, on an agenda in a timely manner, and then voted on. That is clear. But when we need to have what kind of review, honestly, is still very murky to me, even after your discussion. I don't think that this is necessarily the place to try to resolve that, but I would request that once we have a version of the updated letter, that we have a meeting to explain what your expectations are and what public meeting law requirements are regarding the review referred to in the "in other words" section of your letter. It's, I want to understand that, and I feel that if I don't understand it as Chair of the CCI, I would have a very hard time explaining it to anybody who will be affected. And I am very empathetic to the impact that angry citizens have in their interactions with elected officials and staff members, and I do my utmost efforts to maintain a civil environment. Harsh words generally indicate a weak cause in my mind, and, and I would prefer strong causes be discussed in a, in a way that resolves them to the benefit of all. So I don't understand the "in other words" section, and perhaps we can have a discussion following a review of the letter. So I'm complete. Are there any questions?
I'd be happy to have that conversation, that clarifying conversation with you, Bruce. As said earlier, the actual contents of the letter have not changed.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay? There was the addition of underlining.
You're right. I recall that explanation. Thank you.
And the movement of one Washington County from one city to the other, from one sentence to the second sentence. To your question, the actual mechanics that you're familiar with, with the CCI on the comments, just as you described, it's on the posted agenda, the vote is taken. The CCI and to date, I think almost every CPO has reported to us in comment letters how many people were in attendance and how the vote went. Just great. Satisfies the need. As discussed, as you heard in the work session, perhaps you were out of the room at the time, I don't know, so I'm trying to make sure you hear benefit of the doubt.
Thank you.
The instance that we're specifically trying to make sure is clear to everyone, is that votes cannot be taken on subjects that are not on the agenda. Okay?
Understood.
So that is the point, because without it being on the agenda, the Board of County Commissioners doesn't have the opportunity to review what it is that topic is. It's as pure and simple as that. Okay?
And that's, that's understandable. It was the subsequent input to any other governmental agency seemed to require review of the board before we submitted to Clean Water Services or Twelton Hills or the city of whatever. And so that is the item that I would like to have, we could discuss it now if you choose.
Nope.
Okay.
That is part of the process for the clarified RNO.
Very good.
Okay? But the CPO eight that recently took a position with regard to a topic relative to the city of North Plains?
Yes, ma'am.
Is not the purview of a county community involvement organization. Okay? So they were informed to please stop writing letters to the city of North Plains.
As a body.
Correct.
As a body.
Individuals can always discuss and consider those items outside of a county convened meeting.
And so, so that is still unclear in my mind, and I would defer that to a subsequent conversation.
I don't know why it's unclear. I've been over it with multiple individuals. It's not something that is pertinent to public comment right now, so I'd be happy to talk with you offline.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would any other members in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on any county-related topic for up to five minutes? Give you just hand or raise your hand or come forward, not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment for, on any county-related topic? Could give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function, not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I would like to share our board announcements for upcoming meetings. Next Tuesday, July 16th, we'll have a work session in the afternoon and then a board meeting in the evening. That will be our second and last Washington County Board meeting this month. On Friday, July 19th, we have the Clean Water Services Board of Directors Board Training Day, starting at 9:00 a.m. Further information is posted in our packet. For clarity, Tuesday, July 23rd and Tuesday, July 30th, there are no board meetings. And then we're into the month of August. We'll be holding three different sets of meetings in August. The first full Tuesday, August 6th, we'll have a work session starting at 9:00 and then pausing, then reconvening as the Housing Authority Board of Directors at 10:00 a.m. and our board meeting following that, and we'll reconvene in work session after that. On Tuesday, August 13th, with lack of a quorum due to multiple commissioners either on a work-related trip or on vacation, we will not be having a meeting on Tuesday, October, excuse me, August 13th. Then for the following two Tuesdays, August 20th and then the 27th, we will be having our meetings. On the 20th, the work session starts at 9:00, then going to a board meeting at 10:00 a.m. and then reconvening the work session. On Tuesday, August 27th, we'll have a work session in the afternoon and a board meeting in the evening at 6:30 p.m. Are there any other board announcements today, Commissioners? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. This meeting is adjourned and will reconvene in work session in 10 minutes, so let's call it 11:20. Thank you.